This conference will now be recorded.
And as we all know, the rationale of this meeting in that it is in the form of a virtual teleconference is because we're facing a major pandemic in this country. And in order to protect ourselves and our fellow citizens, we are having the meeting in the form of this conference call. The next item on the agenda, approval of minutes, the first set of minutes, or the minutes of the regular meeting of December 10th of the year 2019. What is the pleasure of the board as it relates to those minutes?
I moved Alderman Smith. Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Alderwoman Sarah Carter-Smith, and it has been seconded by Alderwoman Felicia Bridgewater Irving. Unreadiness on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Mathis.
Thank you. On the first page, we can't accept your words from Mr. Ware. And on the second page, we don't have child motion of care on several stories with Mr. Johnson's report. It was just motion by, second by, third say, what it happened to care.
Oh, yeah.
And also on the third page. So I believe editorial changes.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded with the editorial changes. Is there further unreadiness on the motion?
Mayor, this is Bob Latham, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Ms. Latham?
Under my report, it stated I had no report, but we'll have something discussed in the executive session. I don't see any notes from the executive session. I'd like to go back, I ain't had time to go back to my December notes to make that determination. But if we could leave that, if we could add if I determined that there was something that we discussed in the executive session that needs to be reported in the minutes.
Okay. So with that editorial change, is that correct, City Attorney?
Yes.
Okay. Is there further unreadiness on the motion? If there be none, all in favor, say aye. Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sarah Carter-Smith, how do you vote? Alderwoman Sarah Carter-Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Felicia Bridgewater Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Ben Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Dan Diller.
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next set of minutes, yes, Attorney?
I just wanted to make one comment before we move forward. I want to make sure everyone that's participating in this meeting tonight is aware that the agenda for tonight's meeting was posted on the city's website. So that if they want to see a copy of the agenda, it's available for them to view on the website in that right desk.
That is correct. It's under the Agenda Center, under the latest agenda.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody had the opportunity to see the agenda, if they would like to see it.
Okay. Again, City Attorney has brought it to the attention to everyone that if you would like to see the agenda and other documents that are germane to today's meeting, you can go to the city's website and actually pull those particular items. Okay, and also I'd like to remind everyone to please keep your phones muted until it's time for you to participate, and that will help to cut back on background noise. The next is the regular meeting of February the 25th, the year 2019, I'm sorry, the year 2020. What's the pleasure of the board as it relates to those minutes of February 25th, the year 2020?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Mathis?
I'm moved the minute of February 25th, but they're going to have to have editorial changes.
Okay. There's a motion by Alderwoman Mathis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Davis. A second by Alderman Davis. Unreadiness on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Mathis?
Yeah, order number 72, colon, 0220, 73, 72, 73, 74. I need to see them all. 79. No, we got one on 79. Those need to be changed to show the vote.
Okay. You have that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Is there further unreadiness on the motion? If there be none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sarah Carter-Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Felicia Bridgewater Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Diller, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous. The minutes of February 25th, the year 2020, have been approved with the editorial changes and other items were noted by Alderwoman Mathis. Next set of minutes, special call meeting of March 11th, the year 2020. What's the pleasure of the board? Do I hear a motion? For the approval of the minutes with the editorial changes?
Alderwoman Mayor.
Okay, who was that?
Felicia Irving.
Who offered the motion?
Vice President Mathis.
Okay, Alderwoman Mathis offered the motion, it's been seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Unreadiness on the motion? If there be none, how do you vote, Alderwoman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Diller?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Special call meeting, the minutes have been approved from March 11th, the year 2020. Now the minutes for the special call meeting of March 12th, the year 2020. What's the pleasure of the board as it relates to those minutes? Do I hear a motion that we approve with the necessary editorial changes?
Um.
No move? Okay, is there a second? Is there a second?
I'm prepared with editorial changes.
Yes, ma'am?
Okay.
Is there, are you offering a second? Okay, it's removed by Alderman Davis, and seconded by Alderwoman Irving, correct?
Correct.
Okay, unreadiness on the motion?
Yes.
If there be none, how do you vote, Alderwoman?
Yes, yes, there is some, yes.
Go ahead, Alderwoman Irving.
Um, here for attendance, presence, and have that I'm absent. But we had no knowledge of this meeting on the 12th. I was traveling back from DC, and I had no knowledge of this meeting. And I shared that on Wednesday, when we called in, I shared that I would be returning back, and if a meeting was held, it could be held on Friday, so that I would be in attendance, because I wouldn't be back before the close of business at City Hall.
Okay. So noted.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Mathis?
The same thing applies for me. I was not notified, and I was told to ask, because I've notified and checked with some other agencies. And we need a definitive statement from the attorney as to how these notifications are supposed to be taking place, and what is the verification process, because I was also not notified.
Okay. We'll get the City Attorney to look into that. Further unreadiness?
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Alderwoman Mathis? Yes?
Yes, we need to know that if you all are going to pass these minutes, then this should be changed from absent to not notified.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Mayor, if I may jump in, can Ms. Irving and Mathis both mute your computers, please? We have an echo, and it's hard to hear you unless you're on, if you're on your phone, you need to mute your computer, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there further unreadiness? All right. Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
I'm trying to find out, are we voting to add that as not notified, Mr. Mayor? We never did get an answer.
Okay. I know my office was supposed to have notified both of you guys as relate, emails were sent out about the meeting.
No, no, sir, we did not get any email. And I just want to make sure that you all know that, because we would have to reciprocate and say we received it, and I did not receive anything.
Okay. All right.
Mayor?
Well, yes, I'm sorry, City Attorney?
I may be mistaken. I thought we had discussed it at the end of the meeting on Wednesday, and then it was my understanding that the, I think the dockets were going to be sent out to Alderwoman Irving and Alderwoman George Mathis, also know, so that they would have an opportunity to review it before the Wednesday meeting, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold up, Alderwoman Mathis. Finish, I'm, City Attorney?
I was just going to finish by saying that I don't know whether anything's ever sent out. I'm not saying that they were notified, and as I understand it, they may have been off, they were on the telephone Wednesday, so I'm not sure they were physically on the phone when that discussion took place. So I just wanted to clarify my understanding of what took place. So if, and that probably was the case, so it was just a, I guess.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Yes, Alderwoman Mathis?
When, the last thing we heard, and the minutes don't reflect that there was a motion made to have a meeting on Wednesday, the last thing we heard was that it was going to be, the meeting was adjourned, and then we heard some discussion, some noise behind it, but you clicked off, and when we called back, sir, you didn't answer, and then there was a text, and we never got any information about what was going to happen the next day, and we were present there, listening and waiting.
Okay. So let the minutes reflect that Alderwoman Mathis and Alderwoman Irving, they stated that they were not notified in the minutes. Is there further unreadiness? Okay, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote? Alderwoman Mathis? Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote? Okay, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier? Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving? Alderwoman Irving? Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
Okay. Alderman Davis?
Aye.
And Alderman Diller?
Aye.
Okay. Let the minutes reflect that it was unanimous. Minutes approved. Next, we'd like to welcome visitors and remind everyone again that if you would like to see the agenda, you can go to the City of Natchez website, and you can actually pull the agenda on the City of Natchez website. At this time, we welcome our visitors. We welcome at this time Amy Nelson with Dollar General. At this time, we welcome Amy Nelson with Dollar General.
Yes, hello, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. Thank you so much for putting us on the agenda and letting us speak tonight. We certainly appreciate the opportunity. My name is Amy Nelson. I'm an attorney with Rushton Stagley in Birmingham, Alabama. We represent Hicks Snedeker Company, their affiliate Commerce Street Partners. Commerce Street Partners has a contract to purchase certain property in Natchez at the intersection of Highway 61 and Old Prentice Highway West. The issue that we are discussing tonight was originally presented by Bob Latham on February 25th. And I, at this time, am going to let Roger Williams with Watkins and Eager speak further in regards to the issue at hand.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. My name's Roger Williams. I'm an attorney at Watkins and Eager Law Firm in Jackson, and as Amy said, I'm working with Amy and Commerce Street Partners regarding the proposed development on Old Prentice Highway. And the issue that has arisen relates to the status of Old Prentice Highway, and it apparently has never been formally dedicated as a public road, and that is causing problems getting approval for the development and going forward with the project. I think everyone, of course, thought that Old Prentice Highway was a public road, it's been treated as a public road, the public's considered a public road, utilities have been put in the street right of way, everybody's acted as if it's a public road, but apparently just it was never formally dedicated and accepted. And it looks like this issue came up once before, at least once before. We found deeds from back in 2007, unsigned deeds that were prepared by the city, I think in an attempt to rectify this, but then for whatever reason, those deeds were never actually formally executed and recorded, and the issue has come up again, and it's an impediment to going forward with the project with the Dollar General. And it's really just a title issue. We just want to clean it up, and so there's no question that Old Prentice Highway is formally a public road. And so we were proposing, after talking with Bob Latham and others, that the property owners who own property adjacent to the road, which is simply execute quick claim deeds, conveying the road to the city, and then the city would accept the quick claim deeds, and in a resolution confirm that the road is public, and confirm the boundaries of the public road per the surveyor's legal description. Of course, want to do this at no cost or expense to the city, not asking for any improvements to the road, any changes, and really the way the road has always been operated and used, just want to clear up this issue to prevent problems down the road and allow the development to go forward.
Okay. City Attorney?
What Roger said is, actually, to my knowledge, of course, they were employed, as I understand it, to research the title and make a determination, respect to the ownership of that lot on Old Prentice Highway, and I'm calling it Old Prentice Highway and Highway 61 South, and apparently they were unable to locate any deeds into the city of the land where the Old Prentice Highway is located. I think there were actually right-of-way restrictions on the property. However, as I understand it, those right-of-way restrictions were not dedicated to the city that anybody can determine. I did look at the deeds, they sent me a copy of the deed that was prepared several years ago, and apparently the issue did come up. I talked to Walker Brown about it, and I think he said that was in between one board going out and one coming in, and it just, it never got processed. As far as the city's concerned, I mean, might be point, it's a city road, it's been a city road. And as far as I was concerned, I didn't have an issue if they're going to get quick claim deeds from the adjacent owners that would convey the road to the city, at no expense to the city, and without any additional maintenance or requirement on the part of the city. It didn't seem to be an issue to me. It would certainly, it'd obviously clear up any issue that would, that might come up in the future. I mean, as far as the legal standpoint, I don't see an issue with the city accepting those deeds, assuming, as I understand it, Luther Marlin will be preparing a description of the right-of-way to establish exactly where those lines are, and then the city could accept those deeds and acknowledge that it's been a public road for, you know, for, obviously, I think it's been a public road for more than 50 years, so that's my opinion. It's up to the board whether or not they want to move forward with it.
Okay. Any members of the board? Yes, Ms. Frazier?
I have some questions. I'd like to talk to Jim. Are you representing a local company? You say Commerce, LGD? Jim's still on the phone.
I'm sorry. I'm having difficulty making out the question.
Yo, are they a local company? It's the representative?
He has a question for Mr. Williams?
This is Roger Williams. I'm sorry, I was having trouble hearing the question.
My question is, representing a local, I didn't say Commerce Street, LGD, is that a local company?
Oh, I'm sorry, Commerce Street Partners, yes, is just the entity that was set up to make the purchase, and actually, when the purchase is closed, it would be under a different name.
But they are local?
They are actually an Alabama company.
Okay. My other question is to the City Attorney. Who have you, who own this property? Somebody doing three hundred people own this property? George Carrier?
Well, actually, the right-of-way area that we're discussing, it runs from the edge, I guess it's the most westly side of Highway 61 South, and proceeds almost in a D-West direction. That's owned by, I think it's four or five different owners. They own, they would each own up to the middle of the Old Prentice Highway. Their ownership would be subject to the right-of-way, as I mentioned earlier, but it's not understand, the title attorneys haven't been able to determine that that right-of-way was ever dedicated to the city.
Okay. Are they going to be compensated, marginally wise, or what?
No. I don't know whether they're going to be compensated. The city's not going to pay any compensation to.
Okay. If we could acquit claim, here's my thing, so we, in the future, we still going to maintain it as a public street, correct?
I'm sorry, I was saying.
If we quit, if we quit claim this property to the store, do, as a city, do we still maintain that parcel as a city street?
All those, it's a city street. It's been a city street, and it's going to stay a city street. The quick claim deeds will be coming from the adjacent landowners to clear up any question as to whether or not it is a public street.
I understand that much, but I was just saying, so we're going to maintain, you know, you have big trucks in and out there, eventually they're going to wear the street down, so the city's going to be responsible as far as price or whatever.
Well, the city's going to be responsible for that street regardless of whether anything happens tonight or not, whether we, whether we agree, whether the city agrees to accept these deeds to clear up any issue of the title. The city's still got a responsibility to maintain the road.
I understand, but I just want to see where we stand in this, that's my concern.
As I stated earlier, there's, the city's not going to agree to do anything they hadn't been doing in the past. The city's not going to be agreeing to do any additional maintenance or additional overlays or any improvements.
Okay.
Particularly to clear this topic.
Okay. No further questions, Mr.?
Okay. Is there any other, any other questions? If not, you've heard the request this evening. What's the pleasure of the board? Repeat yourself, Alderwoman Smith?
Attorney Latham about the motion to be stated.
What, what the company would need was a motion for the board to accept the quick claim deeds that they're going to acquire on the entire length of the right-of-way, which is the Old Prentice Highway, west of Highway 61, and to, and accepting the deeds acknowledges it's always been a public, public street.
I would move that motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderwoman Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Alderwoman Irving. Unreadiness on the motion? If there be none, how do you vote, Alderwoman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Smith? Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Diller, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. The motion has been approved.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board of Aldermen. Thank you, Bob Latham. We appreciate all your help.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Bye-bye. Okay. Next, do we have, do we have any unfinished business? Moving on, is there any county business? If not, we're moving on to Department Director's report.
Mayor?
Yes?
Ricky Gray, how you doing?
Okay, Alderman Gray, how are you?
I just want to let you know that the Board of Supervisors did adopt a countywide curfew from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM in the morning, and it starts Wednesday morning.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Supervisor, President Ricky Gray. Thank you for that information.
And one more thing I want to bring to your, one more thing I want to bring to your attention before I go. We got an invite from the Governor, Tate Reed. attention before I go. Uh, we got a, a, a invite from the Governor Tate Reed to be on a, a call in the morning at ten o'clock to discuss the virus. So, if you want to be a part of that, you're welcome to come over at ten o'clock in the morning to hear what the Governor says, to hear what the Governor says. One supervisor from each county supposed to be on this call.
Okay. Thank you for the invite. Shoot me a text if you don't mind, Supervisor Gray.
I will. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, next, we will have Department Director's Reports. Chief Armstrong?
Yes, I have two requests. One is from Capile Lincoln Community College here in Natchez. A request from Dr. Sandra Byrne, she's the Vice President of the Natchez Campus. Also Frederick Lane, he's the Director of Campus Police. They are requesting to temporarily use some of our walkie-talkies, anywhere from one to three of our handheld radios until such time they can purchase their own. We do have the extra radios in stock here at the Police Department, over and beyond the number of officers that we are required to have on our rosters, so I have no problem with it if the board approves it. I've also had Attorney Latham to vet this over the last few weeks. However, I will ask that an ending date be attached to the agreement back to them if the board approves this request.
Okay, Chief. So you've heard the request from the Chief. What's the pleasure of the board as it relates to this equip? Yes, Alderman Fraser?
So we go on, I need to ask this question.
Okay, go ahead.
Chief Armstrong?
Yes, sir.
If we approve it, um, we're responsible, they're going to be responsible as well and whatever.
Yes, sir, they will be responsible. I asked that that be included in this request, and they did. The benefit of this, if something does happen down there to where they need to have radio contact with law enforcement here in this city, or even in the county, currently, they would not be able to do it without maybe using their phone. This will allow them to have direct radio contact with us in the case that they need to communicate with law enforcement outside the campus. But they will, they will accept full responsibility of any maintenance up to replacement of the radios, and that is included in this request.
So, we'll just, uh, want to do this, that it doesn't touch with the city's account, so it won't be a problem.
That is correct, and your phone, your phone was really breaking up real bad, but I think I heard what you said.
Yes, I'm, so they'll be able, these radios, they can even call police departments.
Yes, they would be able to speak directly to the Police Department as well as nine-one-one on that particular radio, and again, they're asking for any number between one and three that we can, uh, let them use.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, you've heard the, yes, Alderman Dillard?
Ms. Bob Latham.
Oh, I'm sorry, Attorney Latham.
I, I just, I did look into this matter for the Chief, and the one thing I'll point out, these radios, I think the board needs to include in the motion that they'll be deemed for a temporary period of time as surplus, that the city's not using this equipment so that they can be offered to Capile Lincoln, but there, there's got to be some consideration. The, the, the city doesn't have a right to make donations to junior colleges, even though the junior colleges are considered agencies of the local government. There's just a strict policy against donations, so, you know, the use of those for a short period of time would not, would not be much money. I, I wouldn't think it'd be, you know, the board can determine what might be reasonable if it's twenty-five dollars a radio, you know, for a two or three month period, I think would be sufficient, but under the law, the city is, is not supposed to donate the use of these to, to the junior college. If we can put that in the agreement, together with the obligation of them to be fully responsible in maintenance and damage to the radio devices while they're in their possession, I think that would be fine.
Okay, all right. So you've heard the statement from the city attorney, that in the agreement, we will allow the use of the radios at, you know, twenty-five dollars per radio during that period of time, and all of the necessary information in the agreement in terms of surplus, et cetera, et cetera, in order to protect the city. Do I hear a motion?
I move.
I move. Second.
Okay, it's, it's been moved by Alderman Fraser, and it has been seconded by Alderman Smith. Unreadiness on the motion. If there be none, how do you vote, Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Fraser? How do you vote, Alderman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Mayor, I won't be voting because that's where I work at.
Okay, let the minutes reflect that Alderman Davis abstained and not participated in that process. Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, it's passed by a majority vote, Madam Clerk. Chief Armstrong?
Uh, yes, my second request is from the Natchez Adams County School District. They're asking that we enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Police Department and School District. They're asking that we provide some services that we are already currently providing, such as assist with the hiring of school resource officers, which are police officers, and I would assume that they would probably want to know whether or not we have any background information on these individuals before they hire them. They're asking that we work with them in terms of training, which is something that we currently already go over there and do, and assist the district with training of the faculty and staff to ensure school's safety. A couple of times a year, we go over and put on training as it is. So again, this memorandum of understanding is asking that we do some things that we're already doing. This will be a thirty-six month agreement, starting October one, twenty-twenty.
Okay, you've heard the request of the Chief. What's the pleasure of the board?
You motion on it?
Uh, yes, I do.
I second it, Mayor.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Fraser and seconded by Alderman Irving. Unreadiness on the motion. If there be none, how do you vote, Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Fraser?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis? I'm sorry, Alderman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, memorandum of understanding has been unanimously approved, Chief.
Thank you, sir, and in closing, those radios will be used by police officers down at the college.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Dollar, Public Works?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Board. The first thing I wanted to bring before you today is that the last meeting, Alderman Fraser had asked me to look into a streetlight on the corner of Country Club Drive. I did do that, marked the pole and got with energy. They did take a look at it and came back with the results that, that light has not been charged to the city. One reason I believe that is due to, that particular light is actually in the county. It's outside of the city limits. So I just want to report back that that particular light that's there does not belong to the city, and it is outside the city limits.
Thank, 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 sir. Just a while.
Okay, Alderman Fraser, go ahead.
I have another request by Marathon Auto, on the Mondu Green, Pilgrim Drive. Did you know they replaced, those, those lights, they never did put, do I need a light?
Okay, Alderman Fraser, check your phone, because you've been kind of breaking up all evening.
Do you have enough time, Mr. Mayor?
I can now, yes.
Okay, I have another question. I don't know if you, if you have my question, on right there, Marathon Auto, on Mondu Green, Pilgrim Drive, the, I don't know if somebody replaced some pipe in a light. It took a light pole down, it had a light on it, but they, they didn't put the light back up there, so I need a light back in the general area.
Okay, and that's on the corner of Georgia F West and MLK?
As you try to go to the middle school, you'll see where they replace a pole, and, and if that pole had a light on it, and they never did put the light back up.
Okay, I'll certainly take a look at it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The next thing I have is seeking approval to allow the mayor to execute a letter to the Commissioner pertaining to FAU funding, and with this funding, it's requesting, and specific details would be the overlays of FAU routes, and so we're just looking to send a letter so that our City of Natchez would be on the forefront of this thought in case funding did become available. Now, in speaking with our district engineer, he did mention that there would be a twenty percent match on any funds that were awarded to the city for, you know, the overlays of FAU routes.
Okay, all right. You've heard the request. What's the pleasure of the board?
I may, I move.
Okay, moved by Alderman Irving, seconded by Alderman Smith. Unreadiness on the motion? If there be none, how do you vote, Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Fraser?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It's unanimous approved. Just proceed.
Thank you. Last thing I wanted, seeking permission, or seeking approval for the board to award the general bids to the, to the low bidders, respective low bidders.
Okay, you've heard the request. What's the pleasure?
I move.
Alderman Irving, okay, is there a second? Who was the secondor?
Uh, Alderman Davis.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Irving, seconded by Alderman Davis. Unreadiness on the motion. If there be none, how do you vote, Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Fraser?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Mr. Dollar. Madam Clerk, it's been unanimously approved.
Thank you, Mayor and Board.
Thank you, Mr. Dollar. Next, Ms. Sabrina Bartley, Transportation Director.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Back in late January, I think around the twenty-twenty-fifth of January, we had a tree to fall on two transit passenger vehicles parked at Natchez Transit Systems parking lot. Both vehicles were totaled out. Both vehicles need to be declared as surplus property because they are unusable and at the end of their useful life. So I have the request for this day for your action, and consideration is that Natchez Transit Vehicle Number B eight seven four four, which is a twenty-ten van, and B eight seven six four, a two thousand fourteen van, be declared as surplus property, and that they be surrendered to Byrne Insurance Company for disposal, and that the insurance proceeds be deposited back into the City of Natchez, Natchez Transit System operating in capital accounts, is my request.
Okay, you've heard the request from Mrs. Bartley, that van number B as in boy, eight seven four four, and vehicle B as in boy, eight seven six four, be deemed surplus property. Do I hear a motion?
I move, Mr. Mayor.
Second, is there a second? Okay, it's been moved by, it's been moved by Alderman Mathis, and it was seconded by Alderman Davis, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, is there unreadiness on the motion? If there be none, how do you vote, Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Fraser?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, it's been unanimously approved that those two vehicles be deemed as surplus property. Is that all you have, Ms. Bartley?
That is all, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walter Tipton, Natchez Convention Center.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. I, what I have for the agenda tonight is during the first two weeks of March, between the Rotary Club Two-State Conference and the Gideon's Four-State Conference, we had the old carpet in the exhibit hall removed, and new carpet laid, the two-foot by two-foot squares in the eighteen thousand square feet of the exhibit hall. The contractor with the winning bid was Thompson Tree and Sprang Service, and we have a substantial completion on that project, and we're requesting that the city clerk be allowed to cut the check for fifty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents, which was the bid on the contract.
Okay, you've heard the request. Yes, Ms. Mathis?
Just wanted, first of all, I'm going to make that motion, wanted to know if that's the amount of the loan that was taken out.
Actually, the loan, the loan was for seventy thousand. We haven't actually drawn on the loan list, but the loan included some tables that we've not placed the order for yet, because we wanted to wait until the carpet project was completed.
Thank you. I move, I move that we go on and pay the invoice.
Okay, is there a second? It's been moved by Alderman Mathis and seconded by Alderman Irving, that we pay the invoice of Thompson Tree Service for the amount. How much was it, Mr. Tipton? Fifty what?
Fifty-four thousand, five twenty-two, eighty-nine.
Okay, unreadiness on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
If there be none, uh, yes, Mr. Fraser?
Uh, I can't, it was last time, the vote, I'm, I'm, made.
Okay, is there further unreadiness?
Mr. Mayor.
If not, how do you vote? Yes, Ms. Smith?
Just wanted to clarify, that is the loan that was taken out that the, the Convention Center will be responsible to cover the cost of.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith.
That, that is correct, that we are, assuming we get back in business, that we're expecting to pay that from our operating revenues.
Okay, thank you. Further unreadiness? If not, Alderman Mathis? Okay, thank you. Further unreadiness? If not, uh, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Fraser, how do you vote?
Aye.
That's, that's a no, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, uh, the vote count is that we have, uh, five in favor, one opposed. It passed by a majority to pay that invoice.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Tipton. Uh, yes, uh, uh, Mr. Latham, City Attorney?
Uh, it was brought to my attention, uh, we, we think, uh, the city clerk did advertise for bids to, uh, financing, uh, of that, uh, carpet and, I guess, the tables and, uh, I think Concordia Bank, uh, was a little bitter on, on that financing, but I don't think the board, um, has voted to approve, uh, the mayor to execute the promissory note and the amount that it would be for. So we, we need to do that. I don't know what they need to do at this meeting, if, but, but we need to go ahead and get, we need to get that approved at some point.
Okay, let's go ahead and take care of it now. Uh, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move.
Yes, is there a second? It's been moved by Alderwoman Mathis, and second by Alderwoman Irving. Unreadiness on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
If there be none, yes, Mr. Fraser?
Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
You're trying to, uh, but it ain't, uh, this is, but you, uh, these are just for the tables and, and, and the, uh, chairs at the Convention Center.
That's my understanding.
Mr. Tipton?
Well, I, I can't understand you, uh, Alderman Fraser, but the financing is for the carpet plus, uh, a hundred, uh, tables, uh, that were outlined in February, yes.
Are these, are these tables and stuff coming on a different contractor or what? Or the same person?
Yeah, uh, the, no.
No, the tables come, the tables come directly from a vendor.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to get to. Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand. Okay, then, that's all I need to know.
Okay, is there further?
We need to take a vote out here.
Okay, Mr. Attorney?
Did it happen?
I'm getting ready to take it, a second.
I wanted to clarify what amount of the note would be.
So, the note, seventy thousand, yes.
Okay. I, I thought that was the case, I just wanted to verify that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there further unreadiness?
Yes, yeah, yeah, hold, I need some blab.
Okay, Mr. Fraser, make sure you, you, make sure you speak into your phone because you, you're breaking up.
Also, Joyce Mathis, they, uh, need to mute their mics if they're not speaking. I think they're causing a lot of feedback, just to...
Can you hear me now, Mr. Mayor?
I do, go ahead.
I need some clarification on it. Uh, we're talking about, I'm talking about these tables and stuff. These are, you say these are different vendors, right?
Right.
Yes, so the, the tables are gonna come from, uh, the same place that we originally purchased the tables for, and they're focused under state contracts.
Oh. Okay, that's, that's what I'm trying to find out. This is not from the, the person that, that, uh, this, this Thompson Tree Service, this is not from the same person.
No, that's correct.
Okay, let me, let me explain the motion. The motion is for, uh, me to sign the necessary documents to go ahead on to get the loan for the seventy thousand dollars. The seventy thousand dollars include to pay Thompson Tree Service, and it's also money to pay for the tables that are needed for the Convention Center, okay?
Okay, well, I'm in agreement with the, uh, paying for the, uh, the tables and chairs, but not with the other.
Okay, all right. Is there further unreadiness on the motion? If there be none, how do you vote Alderwoman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Fraser?
I vote aye for the tables and chairs.
Okay, uh, how do you vote, uh, Alderwoman Smith?
Aye, for the total loan.
Okay, how do you vote, uh, Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, it's, uh, unanimous, uh, it's been approved. All right, um, is that it, Mr. Tipton?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor and Board.
Thank you. All right, next, uh, Mr. Johnston? Mr. James Johnston?
I'm looking at the air, uh, one second, um... Hello?
Okay, James, you're here, go ahead.
Evening, Mayor and Board. I placed my report in your package just past Friday.
Hold up, let me tell everybody, let me, hold up, James. Please mute your phones. Me, please mute your phones and the visuals, please. All right, James.
First item, Natchez Railroad At-Great Safety Improvement Program. Staff is requesting a motion to allow the railroad to issue a request for proposals for at-great safety improvement for twenty-three crossings located in Adams, Franklin, and Lincoln County. Proposals are to be due by May sixth, two thousand twenty.
Okay, you've heard the request from Mr. Johnston. What's the pleasure?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, was the motion offered by, uh, Mr. Davis or Mr. Fraser?
Mr. Davis.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Davis, second by Ms. Irving. Unreadiness on the motion? If there be none, how do you vote Alderwoman Mathis? Is that an aye from Ms. Mathis?
Uh, yes.
Okay, uh, Alderman Fraser?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It's unanimous. James, next item.
Second item, Citywide Water Improvement Project, this is two thousand eighteen block grant and state RLF. April is Fair Housing Month. Staff is requesting the board pass a resolution proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month, allowing staff to publish a fair housing resolution in the local paper, post fair housing info in prominent places, distribute fair housing brochures in public places, et cetera.
Okay, uh, you've heard the request. Is there, was it Alderwoman Mathis? Who was that?
Irving.
Alderwoman Irving, it's been moved, okay, is there a second?
Second, by Mathis.
Okay, it's been moved by Irving, second by Mathis, unreadiness on the motion? If there be none, how do you vote Alderwoman Mathis?
Yes.
How do you vote Alderman Fraser?
Yes.
How do you vote Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderwoman Irving? Alderwoman Irving?
Aye. Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It's unanimous, James.
One other item under this category, uh, received today. In addition, staff is requesting approval to pay the following invoice from W G K, which is being paid by Natchez Water Works and the Revolving Loan Fund, invoice number four nine nine two four, invoice amount twenty-four thousand five hundred.
Okay, you've heard the request, what's the pleasure? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Who was that?
Irving.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Alderman Dillard. Uh, unreadiness? If there be none, how do you vote Alderwoman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Fraser?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It's been approved unanimously. Um, James, anything else?
Yes, sir. Two thousand twenty Affordable Housing Program, sponsored by the Federal Home Loan Bank of Dallas. In a little workshop, a webinar was held this past Thursday announcing the program. Applications due on or before May fourteenth, two thousand twenty. Um, in summary, applications are stored on a one-point system. To be competitive, the following items are being proposed. Will again work with two banks. Each bank would sponsor ten homes. All homeowners assisted under this program have to earn fifty percent or less of needed income based on household size. For a one-person household, this is seventeen thousand three fifty or less. At least twenty percent of homeowners must live in a census tract that is no more than eighty percent of median, as an example, on Washington Road. And in addition, at least twenty percent must live in another census tract with a median income that at least one in percent of median to receive the needed economic diversity points. Uh, as an example there, North Rankin. Staff is prepara-, uh, is preparing to offer a homeowner maintenance counseling education course for program participants. Details are being worked out right now with the consultants. Total assistance, including both hard and soft costs, will not exceed ten thousand dollars. Staff is still working to formulate a budget. Here are my action items. Staff is requesting a motion, um, seeking permission to prepare and submit a two thousand twenty Affordable Housing Program application to the Federal Home Loan Bank of Dallas, stating that the City of Natchez strongly supports preparation and submission of this application, that the city via staff will be integrally involved in the preparation and submi-, and administration of the discussed application, and that the H P application supports the city's community revitalization efforts.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Mathis?
I'll move, uh, that part of the report, second.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Alderwoman Mathis, second by Alderwoman Irving. Uh, unreadiness on the motion?
Yes, Ms. Mathis, not really unreadness, but I hope that, uh, James will get this into the Bluff City Post so that people can, you know, have this information. I would like for it to get to churches, but we don't know their status right now. Thank you.
Okay, so note it. Uh, further unreadiness on the motion? If there be none, how do you vote Alderwoman Mathis?
Aye.
Alderman Fraser?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It's unanimous, James.
I conclude my report.
Thank you, sir. Were there any other department directors that had anything before I move on? Hearing none, I will move on to city official reports, and I will move in numeric order. So I will start with Ward One, Alderwoman Mathis.
Very quickly, Mr. Mayor, uh, just a quick report which will be placed in everybody's box. Uh, we did meet at ten AM on March the eleventh with Congressman Michael Guest, and we also met with his legislative assistant, uh, Bubba White. In the sheet that will be left in the boxes is all of their contact information. And we took the Natchez twenty twenty congressional federal lobbying package, which included the bill grant, the slow failure down slope of the Natchez Bluff, interstate designation for I fourteen, the Main Street E W P project for the county, uh, the Concord project, request for funding for vegetation removal on the bluff, and, um, Natchez League, National League of Cities Lobbying Issue, including the refinancing of municipal bonds and the current legislation which does not allow that refinancing, and that would help the city. We took the same report at three PM to Congressman Benny Thompson, and we have all of the, uh, information on who we met, which was, uh, Clay Trees Henderson, uh, the legislative director at Congressman Thompson's office. Uh, we took it to Senator Cindy I Smith. She ran in from a senate meeting and met with us. Uh, one point that might be interesting to the city was that, uh, there's a study, ongoing study on historic tax credit, and they are preparing a bill for submission, and they cited that this could possibly help Natchez a whole lot. And then we also met with, um, Senator Roger Wicker's office, and their staff, and all of them were given the same information. That ends my report.
Thank you, Alderwoman Mathis. Next, uh, Alderman Fraser?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Fraser. Thank you, sir. Uh, Alderwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just, really just hope everyone can stay home and stay safe and stay healthy. And, um, Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if there was any way that we could figure out where if there are any elderly that needed us to do anything about getting groceries or anything to them, pickup items or something, there was some way they could reach out by phone or by email or some way that possibly we could get some help to them? And I, you have thoughts on that?
Uh, yes, Alderwoman Smith. I tell you what, um, at the next, uh, Corona Task Force meeting, I will bring that issue up and see if we can come up with a methodology to assist the elderly in our community in terms of food and, uh, getting grocery and other necessity items, uh, for them. So that's a very good point, and I will, uh, make that as an agenda item for the, uh, chairman of the task force to bring up to see if we can get that organized here in the city. Um, Alderwoman Smith, think you want to give the board an update on, uh, that you received, you went up to receive an, an award on behalf of the city?
I did, Mr. Mayor. We did receive an award of merit from the Mississippi Historical Society for our Proud to Take a Stand monument. And I was able to just, um, explain what the war, what the monument entails and the whole story of the Proud to Take a Stand and, um, the whole, the, the whole issue. And I got to, they gave me really five or so minutes to talk about it, and a lot of people were really floored. They did not know about parchment ordeal, and so it meant a lot to a lot of people, and a lot of people came up and said, "Thank you all for doing that." So it was very meaningful to me, and I, I was very proud for our city.
Thanks to the, uh, Board of Alderman and to the commission for all the work that you did. And, uh, we have received, I think, a total of, uh, three awards, uh, because of that, the, uh, the unveiling of that monument here in the City of Natchez. So thank you, Alderwoman Smith, for going up, uh, to Delta State University to receive that award on behalf of the City of Natchez. Do you have anything else, Alderwoman Smith?
No, I just, uh, um, backtrack a little bit on the other, um, the, there are some people with Rotary, Rotary that would be glad to help with the elderly, so I will get with you on that, too.
Okay, thank you, Alderwoman Smith. Um, Alderwoman, Alderwoman Irving?
I was gonna, uh, allude to the same thing about helping the elderly in our community and different businesses and facilities that may be in need of help as well. The other thing I want to mention also, Mayor, was that, um, there, the light. I've reported on several occasions, we have two lights out at the, on the hill of South Concord. And it really poses a problem at night. Um, there's no light on Dev Road that shines up in that area, and you're going uphill towards that railroad track. There is a light there that's flashing. Public works has checked it, and it's working properly. However, there are two lights out, and my fear or my concern is that it's gonna be a problem if someone has any kind of speed going over that hill and meeting another vehicle coming because it's too dark in that area.
Is that on South Concord?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, you mentioned...
One of the lights that's out is at fifteen South Concord, is where the trailer is.
Fifteen, okay.
Fifteen South Concord.
All right, I have a note of that. All right, I have a note of that.
It's ten.
What's the pole number? Number ten?
Ten, yes, sir.
Okay. I've got it.
Then the other light is at ten South Concord.
Ten South Concord?
Yes.
And what's the pole number? Do you have it?
It's ten as well. They both have ten on it.
Okay. Ten, okay. And you mentioned that there's one on Dev- you mentioned that there was one on Devro?
No, I said that there was no light coming from there, so it's really dark approaching. Turn it off from Devro coming up South Concord. It's really dark. The only light that's there is flashing light indicating that it's a railroad track.
Okay, all right. Well, we will look into that. Thank you so much, Alderman Irving.
You're welcome.
Is that it?
My report, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, um, Alderman Davis.
I have no report at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, Alderman Dillard?
No report.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Dillard. Um, moving on to, uh, the city clerk's report, uh, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. How, how did one? Uh, Mayor, I would to approve the claim docket.
Okay, she's requesting approval of the claim docket.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the claim docket.
Okay, there's a motion by Alderman Smiths. Is there a second?
Second by Alderman Davis.
Second by Alderman Davis. Unreadness on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Mathis?
Three quick things. Um, Armstrong Library Fund for a hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and twelve cents. The concern is, is that one payment or is that a group of payments from Millich?
I don't know page on this, Mathis.
What pages, Ms. Mathis?
Page nine? Twenty-nine. Twenty-nine, I think.
Ms. Mathis, I just, I don't have the invoice with me right now at home, so I would show, and I would say we still have here with Tiffany.
Yeah, it was on the front of the docket. Number one, fund one seventy-six.
I can't hear what she can read.
Okay, um, she said it was on the front of the docket?
The very first sheet, page one.
Yeah, it's, it's fund number one seven six. It has Armstrong Library Fund. And it's, uh, for one hundred and thirty-one thousand, five sixty-four twelve. Correct, Ms. Mathis?
That's correct. And my question is, do we, is that the amount we pay per, um, appropriations per month? Cause it's a Millich, uh, uh, assigned to that. And I don't remember it being that much.
We had a big Millich check, Ms. Mathis, this month. Martin's that big check we get every year.
Okay, so this would take here of several months. That's what I'm trying to get straight.
I think it's just two months, but it was just a really big check this time this month. Martin's always our really big, big check. They go, they'll get more in March every year. You look back, you'll see it. It's back on every Monday.
Okay, the second one, the second one, I'm gonna be quick, is page forty-four. And it's the, uh, Natchez Adams County, Adams Community and Economic Development, that's at Valorem, uh, by Millich, and it's forty-one thousand, five thirty-eight. That has to be more than one month also. I'm just checking to make sure I'm correct. Because we're right at about a hundred thousand dollars a year, and it can't be forty-one thousand dollars a pay period. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am, again, based on Millich, and I'll let you know, I don't have my documents here at home, at home with me, but I'm gonna get an office, I'll call you.
Okay, and then, um, the last thing I had, Mayor, you probably could answer this one. Burn Schooly and Dennis, that's the Bluff project, right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, is there further unreadness on the motion? If not, how do you vote Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Smiths?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Irving? Alderman Irving, how do you vote? Alderman Irving, unmute your phone. How do you vote?
On the claim docket?
Yes.
Are we asking for a vote on the claim docket? I normally don't vote on the docket because of-
Okay. Right, okay.
Okay.
Got it. All right, uh, how do you vote Alderman, uh, Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Dillard? Uh, it passed by a majority.
Thank you, board. Um, the next-
Okay, next.
Yes, I can approve a mini docket.
Okay, you've heard the request, uh, from the clerk? Do I hear a motion?
I move, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Alderman Smiths, second by Alderman Davis. Unreadness on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is my- Just wanted to check to make sure that this, the sixty-four ninety-eight included the National League Hotel and the Hilton and Jackson, and that there were two different ones and not one meeting. That's all. And she can clarify that, the next meeting.
Okay. Ms. Clerk, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay.
Was there a question, sir?
Uh, Ms. Mathis, will you repeat that, please?
Claim forty-nine eight. It just has National League slash Hilton and Jackson. But that should be two different meetings. One should be the na- Yeah, because that's, I'm just questioning that fourteen forty-nine, that's why I'm asking.
Yes, ma'am. Again, Ms. Smith, I don't have my documents with me. I'll have to go talk-
Yeah, but it should be, it should be two different meetings.
That's what I'm trying to make sure.
Right.
Thank you.
So make a note of that, uh, Madam Clerk. This is a mini docket, yes. Okay. Is there further unreadness on the motion? If there be none, how do you vote Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Smiths?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Irving?
For the record, Mr. Mayor, um, I do not vote on the docket.
Okay, uh, how do you vote? So note it. Uh, how do you vote Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It passes by a majority, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor.
Do you have anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Uh, city attorney?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I really don't have anything, uh, except a couple items for executive session, but I did wanna ask if the, uh, police chief, uh, Armstrong, are you still on?
Yes, sir.
Um, you, you had, uh, dropped off the grant paperwork for the grant that was awarded, and the board, uh, you announced to the board, I think, the last meeting or the meeting before. I, I think you'd receive this grant document that you need to sign after the board authorized, you know, the acceptance of the grant. And I, I once wanted to make sure, do you need the board to authorize you to sign this, um, this grant document that you will need to send back to the Department of Justice?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay. Well, I reviewed it, and I, and, uh, the board will, the, uh, police chief received from the, uh, US Department of Justice the grant document that needs to be signed, uh, accepting the award of the hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollar grant, uh, to purchase the, uh, I think, what was it? The cameras, additional cameras and other items that he outlined at the previous meeting.
Yes, sir, the cameras, the installation and the storage for up to two years. That's what's entailed in that, a hundred and forty-nine thousand.
Right, that the board would authorize the, uh, police chief to execute this, a grant document.
Okay, you've heard, uh, the request. Uh, do I hear a motion, Alderman Frazier?
No move. Second.
Is there a second? Moved and second by Alderman Davis. Uh, unreadness on the motion? If there be none, how do you vote Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Alderman Smiths?
Aye.
Alderman Irving? Alderman Irving, unmute your phone.
Aye. Aye.
Ald- Alderman Davis?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Approved. Uh, city attorney?
That's all I have in the executive session. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, next item, uh, is mayor's report. Uh, I've got, uh, several resolutions that I'm requesting approval, uh, from the board. Uh, the first resolution is a resolution to postpone municipal elections, uh, due to the coronavirus pandemic.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes.
I would just say that we get Mr. Robert Bradford, Adams County Emergency Supervisor on the line to discuss this.
Okay.
I'm on the line.
Okay.
Hi, how you doing, Mayor and Alderman?
Okay.
Glad. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay, what, what's the, yeah, go ahead. Can you give us some insight on, on this, uh, effort, you know, a resolution to postpone the municipal election due to virus pandemic? Can you give us a reason why we can't have an election, uh, uh, what's your general thought on what we need to do as a county and a city?
That could shake-
Oh, that's, uh, Alderman Frazier.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we heard you. Go ahead.
Did you get what I said, Mr. Raff? Did I need to- Yeah, I, I got you.
He heard you.
Well, it's, I, I only give recommendations by the information that I know, uh, through my channels. Uh, we know, uh, that other states have continued with their elections, uh, but they put in place, uh, mitigation factors and preventive measures, uh, to continue, uh, to give people their right to vote. Uh, I do have supplies, uh, on hand to help out at any polling station, uh, uh, to request, depends on what they are. I'm in the process of, I could reach out to Florida, see how they did their polls. Uh, but we, if we practice mitigation, uh, practices and preventive measures at polls, uh, and really push those, I think we can, we don't have to suspend it. Uh, this is my recommendation, uh, to look into it. And if anything that, um, you all need, uh, citywide, countywide, uh, to try to operate the polls, uh, I have stuff at my, uh, disposal that we can do, uh, to try to help because, uh, we don't wanna stop nobody from voting, uh, due to that. And by the numbers that we have currently, uh, in Adams County, uh, my recommendation wouldn't be to stop the process. Uh, we, we know that, um, a lot of tests hadn't been, uh, reported yet. Uh, but we can only go on the facts of what we got at hand. Uh, so it'd be my recommendation that, uh, we try to at least mitigate or put a plan together to continue on the election process, uh, for the city. So you're saying that, uh, like Florida had a, had a model, you know, uh, the way they handle their election for the coronavirus? So you say you're gonna get in touch with them and see how they did it? Yes, I can reach out to them because, uh, yeah, they had a significant amount of more cases than we had. And they continue on with their election, but they just put mitigation practices in place, uh, at least to allow people the opportunity to vote.
Okay, so basically, uh, but this will not prevent, will it, uh, Mr. Bradford? It will not prevent the spread, correct?
Right, it, it, where anything is mitigation, uh, yeah, when you say prevent, uh, you know, that's, that's a broad term. Uh, but when you put mitigation practice, try to help, you, you, yeah, we know how the disease is spreading.
So we, right, so we can't guarantee anything?
Right, it's just like going to Walmart, getting cans off the throw, it's the same thing, same process, but-
Right.
When you, when you're voting, you, you do have the, uh, ability to wipe down machine. Uh, we do have stuff for our poll workers to put on to protect themselves. And if we put, uh, things out in the polls and let people know social distancing, fix it, uh, what Florida did, they, they allowed only so many people at a, in the poll at a time. Uh, and if you can get to the point where you know your elderly or your people that high risk, you can have a time for them to come vote, or they can vote, uh, in their vehicles or however you need to do it. So there's ways we could get it done, um, and, and like I say, I do have stuff at my disposal, um, that's really available to help you guys.
Okay, so why is it that, uh, the governor is, uh, postponing, uh, statewide elections? Um, and, and they're not canceling the elections or suspending them. It's just the request is to postpone. And I know that the governor of the state of Mississippi has postponed several statewide elections.
Right, right, and, and when you look, when you look at that, uh, if you look out through the state, there's a lot of counties that's considered hotspots where they got over ten, uh, cases of, uh, and also deal with the population. Uh, you look at those counties, those counties have a greater population, uh, than, uh, Adams County. And also you look at just the ones that can be voting in the city election, roughly what, ten to fifteen thousand people that's maybe registered to vote, uh, for these elections. It may be less than that.
So how, how, how do you, how would you know how many cases will be active within the next week or so here in Adams County?
Right, we, we, we normally get an update from, uh, every morning I get an update, uh, from the Mississippi Department of Health. Uh, and, you know, they try to be on top of it, let me know what numbers is here in Adams County. Uh, it's like, right now, we're, you know, we're at two. Uh, and I know a, a lot more other counties are way in worse predicament than we are. Uh, but, you know, just, I'm just going on my recommendation of what I'm seeing and what we're getting. Um, uh, I, we, we do have a, a resilient, uh, uh, city and county here, and our people, they, you know, they try to adhere to some of the standards and stuff like that, but, you know, like I said, my recommendation is, you know, let's try to at least mitigate, show something, you know, uh, that we're trying to do for. I know the governor, he make, he based the decision off, you know, the amount of states, uh, he got a greater large area that he's responsible for. But here, we only responsible for the people that's in Adams County.
Okay, the best way, in my opinion, and this is, uh, me speaking from, you know, just my knowledge. The best way of reducing the spread and reducing a spike in this disease is to be proactive and not reactive. And that is to wait on numbers to come in, in order to, uh, cause something to happen. What we need to do is that the elections need to be deferred until later. And that's my recommendation to the board.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I understand that, but what about beyond that? What's supposed to get worse if the virus gets worse in a month? If you decide without, what if it gets worse again, what are we gonna do then? Hello?
Yes, what's your question, Mr. Frazier?
My question is, if the virus gets worse, you are postponed, we were postponed on the date that you want. If the virus gets worse within a month, how are we gonna hold the election, we're gonna be about, how we gonna have an election then?
Well, at least it will give us more time to put the necessary, uh, safeguards in place, um, uh, for people to be able to come out and do it in a safe fashion. Uh, but, you know, if, if you're talking about within the next, uh, several weeks, uh, April seventh, uh, for a primary- Uh, but, you know, if you- if you're talking about within the next, uh, several weeks, uh, April seventh, uh, for a primary, I mean, we don't have enough safeguards, we don't know how sp- how fast this virus is spreading in Adams County. Because the turnaround time has been extremely slow in terms of getting test results back, uh, in the state of Mississippi. I mean, we've got fifty tests that are at the State Department of Health at the moment, that we don't even know the results of at the moment. And this virus, the way it operates is that you can be asymptomatic, walking around with it, not even know it, knowing it, and you can spread it while you're in an asymptomatic mode.
Mr. Mayor, I'm-
Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Smith?
Um, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I- I can't in my right, my conscience, not make the motion to defer the election. It's not to not have an election, it's just to defer it to a later, the later day suggestion. So I do make that motion on the fact that we, it is, this is something the city would be doing, and I have to do everything that we can do to keep our citizens safe for this time being.
Okay, is there a second on the motion?
Second. Second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Alderman Davis. Unreadiness on the motion? If there be none, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's no readiness. Um, one of the suggestions was to have a time certain, a month from now, from the original date, which would get us back to the date that we normally had a election, the first Tuesday in May. And, uh, I'm asking, I'm really amending the motion to look at the, to move it to the second Tuesday in May, which would give you time, uh, to do something with, have some kind of an information backlash from that if we go to the second Tuesday in May, which would keep us much closer to the original voting deadline.
Would do it later?
I'm amending it.
Second.
Okay, uh, that's a motion to amend the main motion, uh, and was that Alderman Frazier who seconded?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so a motion to amend the main motion. Is there unreadness on the amendment?
Ye- yes, Mr. Mayor, may I, uh, speak to my motion?
Who was the- what was the person?
Okay, I was listening to what Mr. Bradford said, and I also think that we possibly need to bring in the, um, the group that, uh, is dealing with the elections, because they- they had some suggestions. For instance, a limited number of people be allowed into a precinct, but this absentee ballot can be encouraged. And that could be floated out if we move it to our original date of May, the sec- uh, first Tuesday in May. And also, um, it could have a drop through, drop all that down to six hours. Uh, uh, process, but if we could get it to that point-
Would she want it later?
It would alleviate the situation down further, because you're talking about bringing a new board in right at budget process time. Even if that's one in September one, they're gonna have to adopt a budget within two weeks, two to three weeks, not that, by the nineteen.
So what was my motion? You don't know.
So if we stay with our original, I'm sorry, I'm hearing, somebody's phone isn't muted, because I'm- I'm here in other discussion, and I asked for the floor. Uh, if we stay with the original time, which would be May second that we used to have, we could possibly see what you have in mind, move it down further, and make sure we put everything in place to try to move forward. Because we do not want to circumvent the, uh, electoral process. And we also probably also need to get in touch with all of the people who have their names on the ballot. I am also very concerned about everybody in Adams County and the city of May. I'm very concerned. I'm concerned with the people in my neighborhoods, in my ward, and all over the city. And we are watching all of this on a day by day, almost minute, hour by hour, me- uh, mess, because it keeps coming up on television, and we are following what was suggested, uh, staying in and not doing, uh, uh, not being out and not exposing people. So I am very, very concerned, and I'm very proud. But I think that if we go to the May date, which was our original date before it was changed, we can get everything in line, and hopefully that will give you enough time to see that things have been where we are with these numbers. And that's the reason for my amendment.
Mayor.
Okay, uh, yes, uh, yes, uh, Mr. Dillard?
This is Alderman Frazier. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to say-
Okay, uh, yes, um, uh, city attorney, yes?
Yes, uh, if I could, uh, ju- just to address, uh, what, uh, Alderman, uh, Arsenault has mentioned, I've talked with Larry Gardner today, and, uh, to go over the process, I- I'd met with him, uh, a few days ago, because he had expressed extreme concern about the elections being held on April the seventh, and the fact that a majority, a big majority of our poll workers are high risk.
Okay, hold up, Bob. Uh, will you please put your phones on mute? Your phone's on mute. All right, continue on, Bob.
So in- in my initial discussion with, um, with, uh, Mr. Gardner, he expressed to me that a number of the poll workers are- are scared to come work because they're high risk, uh, seems, uh, susceptible to the coronavirus, and he- he thought we needed to postpone it. Uh, so we had discussed these dates here in this resolution, and- and I got back with him today to, uh, discuss if he had any other suggestions, and he- he- he did suggest that we could, uh, adopt a schedule with May the twelfth being the primary, June the second being the runoff, June sixteenth being the general election. That would give them, uh, the June the twenty-sixth to certify, and then- then the new, uh, officers to take, uh, office July the first. Uh, he- and- and- and discussing it with him, uh, you know, you- you never know what's gonna happen, but he, you know, between the middle of April and the end of May, once we see what the, uh, cases are in Adams County, if- if it's gotten to a point, um, where it's either leveled out or going down, you know, everybody feel a lot more comfortable about going to the polls, if it's staying about the same or increased some, then I think it'll- it'll give the city time to make these preparations that Mr. Bradford was talking about, which I think is a very short period of time, to try to make sure we've got all the, uh, e- equipment and gloves or mask, whatever we need to- to, uh, to get, to make sure our poll workers, as well as the citizens that are voting, are protected when they go to the polls, so, uh, I- I've got this schedule, Larry Gardner thinks that will work, if that would fit, um, if- if everybody would be satisfied with that schedule.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Ms. Mathis?
I'm willing to accept Mr. Gardner's recommendation of May twelfth, is that what I heard?
Yes, ma'am.
May twelfth, May twelfth, with a runoff of May what?
Uh, June second.
June second runoff, and June?
Sixteenth.
As a general?
Yes, ma'am.
I- I accept it as a friendly amendment.
All right, seconded by Alderman Irving, all right?
Yes.
So is there unreadness on this amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Any unreadness on the amendment, Ms. Frazier?
Mayor, I was just, I was, uh, I was just about to say, I don't have any. About to remember what I would just like to say to the, I understand your expertise, and, uh, and, uh, my concern also is for citizens of the nation, and that we move forward with this election. If- if the whole board is in the nation sitting there, want to agree with it, we should move forward on this. Uh, if not, I think, uh, maybe we can, if we can have a special call, if we could get the election commission over here and all the candidates, we might could talk to them, see if they accept.
Okay, is there further unreadness on the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
If not, have you voted? Uh, yes, Mr. Dillard?
I- I just want to go on the record that, you know, reading this resolution, that the state has considered this a serious enough, uh, uh, incident where they're moving their congressional primaries. Now, I don't know what their dates are, uh, but I- but I think that the state, uh, it would- would- would override any concerns, uh, you know, from a county level, as counties or extensions of the state. Um, I believe that if, uh, the concerns that if the- the, uh, city attorney points out-
Please put your mo- phones on mute. Mr. Dillard is speaking, please put your phones on mute. Mr. Dillard, continue.
Yes, that, um, if- if these dates have been worked out with the election commission, because they have the responsibility of the integrity of this election, and they have the responsibility to safeguard the health and the safety of the poll workers, and to ensure to the public that we have taken all necessary precautions to ensure their health, then, you know, I'm willing to go forward on that, uh, uh, you know, as proposed. And I'm- and hearing the city attorney's explanation, if he is in fact assured that the election commission is comfortable with this, then I understand. But I am- I am, uh, as with all the Aldermen, concerned about the public health first, and the, uh, moving this election in this direction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dillard. Okay, um, is there any further unreadness on the amendment? How do you vote, Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Aldo- uh, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman, uh, Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, the amendment has been unanimously approved, therefore, the main motion has been amended, and that is the resolution to postpone the municipal election based on the amendment. Uh, any further unreadness? If not, how do you vote, Alderman Mathis?
I vote aye on the motion as amended.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Resolution has been unanimously adopted. All right, uh, next item that I have is a resolution to institute a stay home order. Uh, yes, Ms. Frazier?
The- the date on this, what- 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 what date did we decided on? The twelfth of May?
Correct for the primary.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Next item is that I have a request to institute a stay home order for additional measures, uh, to control of a contagious and infectious disease for the protection of public health and welfare.
Mr. Mayor, is this the one shooter? On administrative leave, or this is Alderman?
The other one, yeah, yes.
Um, I do have a question. And I'm on page. And I'm at section two. Um, I'm very concerned, and I- I would like to hold section two until we hear what the governor is going to propose tomorrow, because it's my understanding that the governor has not gone to this length. Uh, and the reason I'm saying that, and I'm gonna read it, uh, the part that closes these businesses, um, especially the businesses, because we don't know which ones of them are gonna be, uh, supplied funds from the federal government. Uh, some are listed barber shops and places like that, I don't know. I just hate, I think that people are taking precautions. I think that people themselves are gonna limit where they go and when they go. Uh, I think that we could outline some precautions for those businesses to take to try to keep them going, because I'm not sure they're gonna meet the- the- the basket of- of federal fund monies that's gonna come back to them. And I don't want to see our people without money, we're talking about getting them groceries, if they can't buy them, they don't have any money to spend in a re- ready cash, but we're creating another situation here. So I'm very concerned with section two, and I would like to hold section two until we hear what the governor's gonna say, until the meeting that you've been invited to tomorrow, and- and- and look at that, uh, section, because I don't want to put our people out of work. I think we could put some guidelines in that we've already said about no more, especially the law, depending on the size of the place, how many people can be in that one time, the smaller places, one at a time. I know a lot of places are just taking one person and finishing them up, and they're using gloves and whatever else they need to. I'm- I'm just very concerned, and I think our people, by virtue of this discussion tonight, will self-limit themselves and say, well, okay, I might not need to go get my hair cut or my hair washed or whatever. I- I- I just want to be careful about hurting our people with the virus. Uh, I'm concerned about the virus, but I'm also concerned about people relying on it, and they got to have some money that they can ta- take care of their light bills, their water bills, everything that's going on with, that this virus is affecting and them being able to purchase food and take care of their children. And these are hitting base businesses, real baseline businesses, and- and I'm concerned about those people, because I'm concerned about everybody. And I- I think that we need to definitely look at number two and be very careful, and maybe put some, get with, uh, Brad and- and the emergency management, and try to put some things in place that allows them to at least have a skeletal way of handling their business. And that's, I- I'm gonna ask if we delete that, but I'm- I'm trying to give you, I also listened to the White House response about non-hotspots before I got on this call, and I listened to Dr. Anthony, I think it's, uh, Fashi, and he said the policy, uh, with non-hotspots, uh, in turn, perter- uh, pursuant to infections, we got to be wise on acting on policy with the data, and- and see what we have. And if the data sustains the policies that we are getting ready to address and put in place. And that's what I want to look at in terms of the economic, uh, development here for our people who are trying to- trying to just make a small amount of money to keep themselves viable and alive. Thank you.
Yes, um, you know, when you talk about data, you know, once you get a flood of data in here to say that you've got so many cases of Corona, that's actually when it's too late. That's who, the virus at that point is spreading all over the place. So, and that's my point to this, uh, to the Board of Aldermen, is that with this disease, you can't be reactive. You cannot wait on data to come, because it's too late at that point. You have to be proactive with this disease in order to reduce the spread and to prevent people from getting this disease. And that's the rationale, uh, for, uh, this, uh, request that I- I'm making, uh, to the board.
Yeah, I understand that, I just wanted to make sure you understood that my discussion about that- that data didn't come from Joe's, it came from the White House, uh, presentation just before I left, I got ready to get on this meeting. And that's why I brought it for. This is not Joe's, this is adopted that the- that the president had, uh, speaking to the whole country. And his name is Anthony, A-N-T-H-O-N-Y, F-A-C-I-C-I, or F-A-R-I-C-I. And he was just on at five o'clock, that's why I brought what I said, this is not Joe's information. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Dan Dillard.
Yes.
Um, you know, reading through-
Um, you know, reading through these sections, uh, it- 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 you have to be reminded that these are recommendations. These are not, this isn't martial law, that no one's gonna get arrested, or written a citation. But I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that Adams County and the city of Natchez, at this point, in our experience with this pandemic, we may have the opportunity to contain it as opposed to trying to mitigate it. The difference being is that if you get the information early enough, you can do something about it. If you get the ma- information afterwards, then all that you're able to do is to try to mitigate the damage. There's- there's a significant difference in there. And as I understand, we're under a, essentially, a national two-week quarantine period when we're trying to, different parts of the nation, trying to get containment, to identify, see if we can contain it, isolate it, as opposed to carrying on as normal business. And then at that point, we're- we're gonna have to try to mitigate it, which is where New York is. They're- they're beyond any possible isolation or containment. They're- they're now in trying to deal with the damages. It's beyond you. We have the fortunate position that in small numbers that we have identified so far, and- and I understand that those can't be- be actual numbers, because there hadn't been enough testing. So I understand, uh, your position, Mr. Mayor, and I understand Alderman Mathis' position, but these are recommendations that we're trying to put in place in order to control it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Alderman Diller. Let me tell the board this.
Mr. Mayor.
When you- let me- let me say this real quickly, and I'll- I'll- I'll recognize you, Alderman Smith, in a second. Just mute your phones for one second. If you don't mind. Um, if we go back and look at history, go back, if you don't mind, will you mute your phones for a second? Go back in history to 1918, when this country was faced with the Spanish Flu. Those cities that were proactive in this country had the fewer fatalities. Please put your phone on mute. Please place your phone on mute.
He called me, said he was on his way down, and I called him.
Would you please put your phone on mute? Put your phone on mute, please.
I can't find the number he called me on. He wouldn't answer, because I asked him to call me back and see if he was having what it's happening.
I can't find who it is, Mayor. I'm trying to find who's talking, not me.
Please, will you please?
Mr. Mayor, they think it is my phone, and it's not. My phone is muted, and my computer is off.
Sorry, Sarah, that was my fault. Uh, that was the new caller that came in. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. Back- back in- back in, okay, back in 1918, when this country was faced with the Spani- Spanish- Spanish Flu, those cities that were proactive, that put things in place, had the fewer cases of Spanish Flu. They were the cities that were successful. They were the cities that had the fewer fatalities. And that's what I'm trying to do here for the city of Natchez, is that we are trying to be as proactive as possible. We're trying to prevent as many cases of Coronavirus from impacting our citizens. We are trying to prevent our people from dying from this disease. And that's why I'm requesting for the adoption of this resolution. Alderman Smith, you have something?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just wanted to say I- I appreciate the fact that we have, as a city, and a small city, a rural city in Mississippi, have been so proactive in creating a Coronavirus Task Force and giving out information that's been putting us ahead of a lot of cities, um, way larger than us, even in some states, to be proactive in this and not being behind the curve. So, and- and Alderman Diller was absolutely correct. If anyone looked at the legal way you have written everything that's been on- on the press releases, it's been recommenda- recommendations or strongly urging you to do something. So it's not been any kind of mandate. So I think we've been very, you've been very correct the way we've done it. And I know, you know, we've got, um, William Banks, who's been on the committee, and I know he's got some updates. I mean, I- I feel like he could probably tell us, I mean, if there's one, if we could have one minute to hear some of the updates from him, is that possible?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, we have the chairman, um, Mr., uh, Thoms, are you there of the task force?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
Uh, would you please make a comment?
Yeah, I will, thank you. So, um, the task force is very strongly advising that we do go into a stay-at-home position, except for critical services. And we've put together a- a proposition toward that. And there are many, many reasons why we are taking this position. One is, we know that the only way we can prevent broad-spread infection, and then a certain percentage of those infections resulting in the risk of death of compromised citizens, senior citizens or people with comorbidities, is to reduce the spread. The only way to do that is by being proactive before it happens. We've been struggling in this community with a position of, well, when we get our first positive case, and then we do. Then when we get our second positive case, we'll- we'll go into action. Well, those are- those are reactive statements, and those are reactive steps. And the- our commitment all along has been that we have to be proactive. And we've been watching the activity and the events as they've unfolded in Europe. And the countries in Europe who have been heavily hit by this, looking to the United States and pleading with us, telling us what we need to do. Do not be relaxed like they are waiting till things get bad. Act before they get bad. And then we look right next door at Louisiana, which is in a stay-at-home position right now. And Louisiana has the fastest-growing infection rate on the globe. And we look at New York City, where their positive cases are tripling every day. And this has not a high percentage of mortality in terms of ten or twenty percent, but speaking to comparative diseases like the flu, this is a high mortality rate of one, two, or three, or four percent, depending on the different communities. That's a lot of people. So if you want to keep letting people run around and participating in their daily activities freely, as many people in Natchez have been, in the bars, in a handful of dine-in restaurants, in some stores, um, then just start picking some faces out of people you don't mind dying. And you might have a lot of those you'd like. But we're gonna pay a price here. We have got to be proactive. Doing nothing is gonna result in death.
Thank you, William. And William is the, uh, co-chairman of the task force. Yes, Mr. Frazier? I cannot- I cannot hear you, Mr. Frazier.
Me neither.
Yeah.
I appreciate what you just said about being proactive, but from what I, most people in the way in the environment, but we all want to spread fear around people. And- and that's my biggest concern, you know, people get- they get paranoid and get scared. But this is, I understand this is a dangerous virus. And from, like I said earlier, from what I can see, people in Natchez have been- been staying and have accepted going out for essential needs. And- and I'm in total agreement with all these bars and stuff, they need to shut down and everything, whether it's for our citizens and stuff. And- and I appreciate the task force, you creating the task force, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
I have the wrong copy, because the copy that I have says, under section five, that if the chief of police determines that a violation has occurred, the chief of police or any officer acting under his command may issue a warning to cease and desist from the violation of any provisions of this order. If any person continues to violate the mandate of the order after a warning has been issued by the chief of police or any officer acting under his command, the person shall be guilty of a misdemeanor, shall be subject to the fines and penalties set forth in the city of Natchez Code of Ordinance. All proceedings that described herein shall be conducted in accordance with Mr. law. But then I heard us say that we were not, I heard different people say it was not a mandate. So I'm asking about section five on page.
Yes.
And, um, while we are pausing for a moment, if everyone can see your computer screen, if you're at your computer, please look at that. This shows what happens with this virus with different levels of social distancing or limiting being around other people. The top third shows what happens if we do nothing. And in thirty days, one person will have infected four hundred and six people. Then the next middle third shows if you have a fifty percent less exposure, you result in only fifteen people being infected. And then the bottom third shows if you go into a more stringent control with seventy-five percent less exposure, only two and a half people are gonna be infected over thirty days. The results of limiting our activity and being around other people are profoundly effective. It is the only tool we have. We don't have a vaccine, and we don't know that we have a way to treat this. All we have is to avoid social contact.
Thank you, William.
We- with the, um, EOC, we failed to seek any guidance from a physician, unfortunately. But if I could read what Dr. Lee England, who is an infectious disease specialist and who served on the task force, shared in his public service announcement, he said, "We are facing a disease without vaccines and without an antivirus, but we are not coming to this without experience. We know what to do to prevent the spread of Coronavirus. It is not possible to stop the virus altogether right now today, but we can slow down the spread of the disease and slow the presentation of cases to the hospital." And this is one of our greatest concerns. We have a small hospital here with very limited resources. Jackson and Baton Rouge are not gonna take us on, because they are being, they're gonna be slammed themselves. We can only take care of ourselves. We have very limited capacity here.
Mayor, Board, Alden, this is Brad, Adams County MA Director. I've- I've heard somebody state the EOC, uh, but being made, uh, directing the vote that I give you guys, uh, that the Adams County, everything follows up on the Adams County Emergency Management Plan, and, uh, my organization is credited, not- not to dissuade the task force of what they do. But, um, where there's a disaster declared, uh, it was voted by the board unanimously and also the city mayor, that we follow up on the Adams County Emergency Management Plan. I- I, my office is privy to information that you guys don't normally get, and I can assure you that when we operate out of our plan, uh, we adhere to a lot of these guidelines and standards. And not only does it affect, uh, the county, but it affects how the city receives funds and stuff like that according to, uh, the- the instant command structure and national management system. Uh, now, for every reaction, for every actions ever reacted, uh, and I'm gonna say this, and I'm not trying to put nobody down, but everybody know me, I'm just frank. Uh, but most people don't want to be part of the process, you know, they just want to be part of the outcome. But the process is where you figure out who's worth being part of the outcome. Now, what I'm saying is recommending to the board that, you know, you don't want to put people in a panic mode, where it's like you're taking their liberties, because the first you find, the police officer that's on the side. Uh, we've got proven data, uh, you know, I know we're being compared to New York City, but New York City has way more people than we do. And like I say, I- I know people here in Natchez, Adams County, they're being proactive, they're doing things to mitigate that. Uh, so what I'm recommending is that, you know, we still adhere to the guidelines, but we don't need to be to a point we so quick though, people, we cause a problem down the road.
Okay, thank you, Brad. All right, um, my request to the board is to adopt the resolution to institute a stay-home order, uh, for additional measures of- to control a contagious infectious disease for the protection of the public health and welfare for the citizens of Natchez. That's my request from the board.
Don't move.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Davis, seconded by Alderman Smith. Unreadiness on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
If not, how do you vote, Alderman, uh, Mathis?
No, I had unreadness.
Well, go ahead with your unreadness.
Okay, my readiness is, um, I want to subdivide this, but I really wanted to ask if we could hold off on section five until the governor met with the group tomorrow. And- and I- I can look, I can amend the motion to hold section five, let everything else go through, because that would be urging, which is what I heard everybody say, we are urging people to do this, and- and we're listening it. And hold off on section five until the governor speaks to us tomorrow and lets us know where he is. And if that, if in case he's ready to put everything in law and- 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 and deal with- with- with, uh, arresting people and giving fines, then we could come back in on a special call after your meeting tomorrow, like we doing this, and- and add section five. And I'm asking, I'm just, I don't want to make it as a motion, I'm asking if that's a consideration that the board could make.
Mr. Mayor, I'm asking a question.
Yes, uh, Ms. Smith.
Um, uh, Attorney Latham, is- is a warning, is that a warning on there? Is there, is this necessary?
What?
Section five, it said a warning, and then, I mean, is the language of it so that, um, what Alderman Mathis is concerned about? Is the language supporting what she is concerned about?
I'm not sure what your question is to me. Is- is it, does it have to be in there?
So basically, what- what section five is simply saying is that, you know, the chief of police, his department will give a warning first. And if they continue, then, uh, they may be subject to fines and penalties. So it's just basically the section that allows, uh, the police department to be able to enforce the, uh, resolution that is adopted.
So a warning and then subject to fines?
That's what I'm concerned about.
So it, uh, warning and then subject to fines, but the beginning of it says recommendations. So I, is there some-
Right.
-part of that that doesn't, if the first part of it says recommendations, and then- then it says subject to fines, is there, is that not, um, if you recommend something, can you fine somebody on it? I guess that's what I'm saying. Is, do we, is that?
Nope.
I don't think you're looking at the right, um, right copy.
The- the- the, section five has a- a- some things that the police will do, it's not recommendation. And that's the part I, I- I guess I better just go on and do it. Let me just do this. Let me move the men, the whole section five. Hold up, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, uh, Alderman Frazier?
Uh, and Ms. Mathis, I think that we should wait tomorrow to see what the governor's say. We don't want to perceive ourselves as being a police state, just- just- just imposing laws on people. So we need to have some- some verification on this. If the governor says it's okay, then we'll go from there. But just- If the governor says it's okay, then we'll go from there, but just as on the local level, I think we need to hold up this.
Well, I, I, I've got maybe one suggestion that may, I don't know whether it'll resolve the problem, but the, the, the way this, um,
Language.
The way that the
Hey, Alderman Frazier, put your phone on mute, please. Okay, uh, Bob, go ahead.
So, my, my point is that the way the document is written, there's some flexibility and, uh, whether certain businesses, you know, could, could be opted out of the ban, and so I wouldn't see a, a problem if there was a provision that allowed business owners to apply for a waiver, and the waiver would be, and I, I, I was noticing, um, actually, I saw the posted, uh, um, uh, executive order that the governor, um, has, has signed today or this evening, and, and it provided, for instance, restaurants are going to be required to be takeout unless they can show that their dining area could be limited to ten people, and that would be even if you could section it off so there wouldn't be but more than ten people in, say, a particular area, so there would, there would be social distancing, uh, i- i- at those, uh, restaurants. So, and for instance, um, there may be, um, like, other of these businesses, I think, uh, Alderman, Arshno was talking about, the beauty pollers, they, they may, there might be some out there that, that, that only have one, uh, you know, ability to do one or two people, and you'd shut them down when, then, they wouldn't be in violation of, you know, what the, you know, of the social distancing or the number of people gathering, so, and you might, so, if that's the case, I, I think that would be fair for them to be able to file a waiver, um, under the, under these particular provisions.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Ricky Gray, could I, could I make a comment, please?
Well, this, we, we're in the midst of a motion at the, at the moment.
Not a motion?
We're, I, I mean, we have unreadiness on a motion, and this is for, primarily for the Board, uh, in, in all to have a discussion on, so, because we have a motion on the floor at the moment, all right?
Yes, I understand.
So, uh, the city attorney is, the city attorney is recommending that there be a provision placed into the resolution that allows a waiver for a business if they are in compliance, correct, uh, the city attorney?
Right, if they can, uh, if they can exhibit to, uh, the police department officials that, that, that their, uh, business establishment can conform to the social distancing part of it, as well as the limiting it to under ten, ten people or under, yeah, anyone.
Okay, so I, um, receptive to an amendment that that provision be applied to the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move that that amendment be applied to the resolution.
Is there a second?
And that the explanation goes out to businesses.
Second.
Yes, ma'am. It's seconded by Alderman Smith, unreadness on the amendment. If there be none, how do you vote, Alderman Mathis? Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Mr. Mr. Frazier's trying to get in with unreadiness.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Frazier.
You said it is a apply for a waiver, I thought it was apply for a waiver, it's right there in there. Mr. Attorney?
Repeat your question.
I'm sorry, I couldn't. It's apply for a waiver?
I, I didn't, I didn't.
This is buddy city attorney. Bob, you say it's making a seven, they can apply for a waiver to be open or what?
Right.
I think that we have said a dangerous question because you let once, one business open and the other, uh, that, they're going to be kind of, a lot of people going, going to get really, really upset behind that. I think we're going to live too far out of the branch.
If, if, uh, if a business But anyway. Go ahead, Bob.
I, I just think if a, if, if a business, even though it's designated as one of these banned businesses, that they can show that they can comply with all of the CDC, the social distancing, the, um, uh, ma- maintaining, you know, channelless, uh, people in their establishment, you know, I don't think they should be punished if they can comply with all these other guidelines, so, and, and I think that's, you know, making it fair for everybody, because I, I, I don't think it's fair for businesses that can comply with it that they're taken out because, uh, they just grouped in with, uh, people that, that need to be, um, closed.
Mr. Mayor, this is Dan. Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Diller, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Attorney, would, in Section Five, if we took the wording of shall be and changed that to maybe, which would give some discretion as to the enforcement, would that be of any assistance in this matter?
Well, that would, that would give some flexibility to the police department to, to, uh, oh, it would, it would give some flexibility on whether or not they would be subject to fines and penalties because it won't be a mandatory, uh, provision.
Correct. I think that would be back in the spirit of, of the, the intent is to make strong recommendations, and that for small businesses that do not congregate more than ten people, that they would not be, uh, subjected to any fines or penalties.
I, I, I agree with you, Diller, I agree with you, Alderman Diller. So, Mr. Attorney, can you word that into this waiver that you take the shall be and make it may, and then, and, and, and add the part that Mr. Diller just put in? And, and if I, if I understand that you're going to put that in there, I'll accept all that as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
I, I could put that in there.
All right.
Wait.
Further unreadiness? If not, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote on the amendment?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman, uh, Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Diller?
Aye.
Same motion has been amended, further unreadiness. If there be none, how do you vote, Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier?
Uh.
How do you vote, Alderman, uh, Smith?
Uh.
Alderman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Diller?
Aye.
This unanimous resolution has been adopted to institute a state home order with the additions, uh, in the, uh, provision that has been placed. Thank you. The next item I have is a resolution adopting an amendment to the City of Natchez Personnel Policy Providing for Administrative Lease Pay. Uh, Bob, you want to explain that one, city attorney?
Yes, um, the, uh, the, the legislature passed, uh, Bill Number sixteen forty-seven, now last week, and the governor signed the, the bill, so it's law now, and it provides that, uh, that municipalities can institute a policy where administrative leave can be granted with pay, uh, and this was done, the state already had that authority, the state agencies did, but the, uh, the local, uh, agencies and municipalities kind of didn't have that ability, so if you've got someone who needs to be off because, you know, they, um, been infected by the virus and they're required to be off as a result of coronavirus, then, um, under this amended, uh, personnel policy, uh, they can get approval to receive their pay during the period that they're required to be, uh, off of that fourteen day, uh, incubation period, um, or if they're, if they actually have the flu and they have to be out for that fourteen day period, even more, it would basically have to the mayor to make a determination on a case by case basis, uh, who would be entitled to the administrative leave pay.
Okay, uh, do I hear a motion?
Don't move.
Is, is there, is seconded by Alderman, okay. Uh, move by Alderman Mathis, seconded by Alderman Irving, unreadness. If there be none, how do you vote, Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Da- uh, Alderman, uh, Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Diller?
Aye.
It's unanimous, resolution is adopted. Okay, uh, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. Ma- Mayor, I would like to recognize, uh, Attorney Heidelberg at this time.
Okay, um, Ms. Heidelberg?
Yes, sir. How you doing, Mr. Mayor? How you doing, Board?
Okay.
Uh, um, as you're all aware, we had to close the casino last Tuesday, uh, and close the hotel out this, uh, actually on yesterday as a result of, um, coronavirus. Uh, and there is, at this point, I do know in April, a payment that is due to the city with respect to, um, uh, the lease payment, and I tried to reach out to all of the, Alderman, along with the mayor and the, uh, our board attorney regards to, uh, uh, deferring that payment and a resolution to, uh, begin that payment in May, June, and July with an additional thirty thousand dollars a month for those payments. The reason being is that we would, we will pay our employees up through the middle of April, uh, their insurance will be in, in effect up to the end of April. However, we have quite a few people who are dealing with major ailments, and we're trying to extend the health insurance at least through that of May to make sure that they are protected, uh, and, uh, that's why we're kind of coming before the Board to see if we can, uh, perhaps get a permit that will aid the process of keeping these three hundred, uh, people, uh, insured for at least an additional thirty days.
Okay, so, uh, state your, specifically, your request.
The request is that the payment, we made the payment for March, the payment that is due, I think it's like liberal eighty-nine thousand dollars for April, April payment for the lease, be deferred until May, June, and July. What I mean by that is we'll make the full payment in May, we'll add the additional thirty thousand dollars in May, the additional thirty thousand dollars in June, the additional thirty thousand dollars in July. Come July, everything will be caught up, uh, with, for an effort to, uh, continue this insurance for the employee.
Okay. All right, you've heard, uh, the request from the casino, uh, via, uh, Mr. Heidelberg. Uh, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
Who, who offered that motion?
I did, the woman Irving.
Irving? All right? Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Who is that?
Alderman Frazier.
Alderman Frazier, all right, unreadness, Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I definitely want them to be able to pay their employees and keep their insurance going, too. I just want to make sure we have provisions in place, if we don't receive this amount this month, that we're okay with paying our employees and, as well, and our bills. I know we've tried to take care of some things with, you know, on our end, but I just want to make sure some of that has happened so that we'll be okay too, with this payment. It's a big payment for us as well.
Um, city clerk, can you respond to that?
Okay, I'm here, Mayor.
Yeah, can you respond?
I'm here, I can say.
You did not, she, she wanted to know if the Board approved the casino deferring their lease payments to the city, will the city, will it, our financial house, your office, will we be able to take care of paying our employees, our bills, if we defer these payments?
Okay, I just got the information tonight, we did get our big check in for March, but I would have to run the numbers, I can't say off of my head no further, but we are looking to do it right now because our big check came in from the county.
Okay, so, but, what?
But I have to do the numbers, I don't know.
Okay. All right, so, uh, to answer your question, Alderman Smith, the city clerk said that she would have to crunch the numbers to find out if, uh, she would have enough money to take care of the, the financial obligations of the city.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, one of the things that I had, had, um, asked about earlier is our credit line, um, our tax, um, anticipation loan and, and credit line for that, have we looked at, um, increasing that because, knowing what was coming up, and I was just wondering if we had, had addressed that with our bank?
Okay, uh.
We paid, we paid the previous one, um, we paid it back already, um, we haven't got another line, another anticipated revenue loan, but we did do that in October, it's been paid.
Mr. Mayor, would you repeat that, I, I couldn't hear, I'm sorry.
Uh, repeat that.
The long we got back in October, yes, sir, the anticipated revenue loan we got back in October, uh, October has been paid, we paid in full, um, there's not one now, um, we can still get another one, but I don't think it's necessary for our bills, but like I said, I'm going to the office tomorrow and crunch the numbers for you.
Do you have that, Ms. Smith?
Uh, not, not really, would you repeat it? Uh, it's, it's, it's reverberating on my phone.
Okay, uh, if I'm correct, Ms. Fordenberry, Madam Clerk, you said that the, uh, the loan we've paid back?
Yes, sir.
We paid it?
Yes, sir.
She said that we've paid it back, the loan to Cucuria Bank, it's been paid back. Um, and she said she would have to crunch the numbers to find out if we disfer, allow the casino to defer their payment, you have to crunch those numbers to make sure that we have enough money to take care of the financial obligations of the city.
Correct, okay.
Do you have that, Ms. Smith?
Okay, yes, I want to just, um, confirm one thing, when she says loan versus credit line, is that a tax anticipation, just a loan, or is that a credit line? So, that is not something we pay back, it's still, we have their credit out there, or it's just a loan?
No, ma'am, it's not, it's not, uh, it's not a credit, it's that anticipated revenue loan you guys got was in, um, was October for a hundred thousand, I mean, a million dollars, we spent eight hundred thousand of it, we paid back eight hundred thousand and eight hundred, like three thousand, but, um, interest on it, so it's been paid, and it's not, it's not in a living credit or anything we have open right now.
Okay, she's saying that we do not have a line of credit that is open right now. The tax anticipated lon- anticipation loan has been paid back.
Yes, sir.
All right, okay, so, Mr. Mayor, I'm just asking, I mean, if there is any way that we can, you know, just, it, how, even if we have to have a special call meeting, we got to figure out, we've got to make sure we can pay our employees, because we have to keep the whole city running at this point, um, and then we can get back on this, and I would, I want to take care of everybody, I promise, the casino employees as well. Does any, I would love to hear someone else's on, opinion on this.
Okay. Is there further unreadness? Yes, Mr. Frazier?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm obviously, uh, same, uh, page here, Alderman, uh, Sarah Carter Smith, but on the other hand, it's just like we're at our, this is our house, it, is there any way that we can get it deferred on? And is there any way that we can get it deferred on tax, tax anticipation loan to the government or whatever? Is there any way we, uh, no guy? Cause we, and I say, we do need to be out, or need to keep the city running. But as it stands now, everybody is under the crunch, you mean? It's, you know, there's no one that's working and the virus has got everything in up here. So I think somewhere down the line, the city should have some kind of relief. And, but like I said, we still want to pay our employees and our biggest employee in the city in Nashville is the casino. It's one of the biggest employees and we need to keep those peoples in, in good standing too.
Okay, is there any other unreadiness out there?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. If we-
Ms. Mathis?
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, what I'm thinking I heard him say was dividing that payment up. And, uh, he, he was, I hope I'm not saying it wrong. I think it's the April payment that he wants to make. We should have a meeting the second Tuesday in, in April. And by then, wouldn't we know? And I guess I need to defer back to Mr. Heidelberg. If we did it the second meeting in April, would that be too late for you?
I think that would. I mean, we would probably need to know by, pretty much by the first of the month, uh, because that is when we would have to make provisions for those payments or the insurance itself. So that's going to make the determination of, because we got to pay it in advance of, not at the time of. So that's, that's why I, I, I hate, I hate this poor timing, but we just closed last week and now we just getting all these numbers in and I apologize for that.
Okay, well, I, 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 maybe we could meet like a special call. And, 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 and after she crunches her numbers.
Right, so, uh, basically what you're requesting, Alderman, uh, Mathis, is we defer this motion until later while the city clerk crunch her numbers. And what I will do is have a special call to deal with this particular item.
Okay, can we get a date that you could possibly have that special call? So that we defer to a time, so?
Um, okay, uh, let's, let me look at the calendar here. Give me one second. Um, uh, let me ask the clerk, when do you think you, uh, will be able to have, um, an answer for?
With any time, I will be in office tomorrow, ma'am, so we work on it first thing in the morning.
Okay, uh, so we could have a special call, uh, probably, if it's good for the Board, uh, let's say Thursday morning, the twenty-sixth?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that, Mayor. I'm, I'm just backing up what Ms. Smith said and I think that would give us, we would be doing what we need to do to be judicially responsible for our employees and us, the casino, if possible.
Um, Attorney Latham, is that a good day for you?
That, that, that would be fine and I'm assuming we, we, we'll be doing a special call by teleconference also, right?
Uh, correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so, let's say, uh, the twenty-sixth, um, uh, would he, would, would ten o'clock be too early?
I'm fine with ten o'clock, yeah, as long as we can get through and I can get back to the prices right because that's the only thing I can do right along here now.
Okay, so, um, a motion to, uh, defer, uh, I will entertain.
Don't move.
Second, there's a second. Move the second that we defer this issue until Thursday, uh, special call at ten o'clock, Thursday to twenty-sixth. Uh, unreadiness. How do you vote Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do, how do you vote Alderman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote Alden, Alderman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Davis?
Aye.
And Alderman Diller, you are not participating in this motion, correct?
Correct.
Let's amend this reflect that Alderman Diller did not participate in this motion. Okay, so it passed by a majority. All right, is there any other new business? If not, um, we would need to, uh, Bob, help me out with this, uh, we go into a closed determination, correct?
He does.
Okay, and all the members have the information for the, uh, closed determination.
That information is being sent out now, Mayor.
It should be sent out, uh, you should have it, uh, members of the Board. It should be, uh, it was sent out by Pam, correct, Dustin?
That's correct, uh, on the text chain and on, uh, email, it should be.
Okay, it is-
What were the two?
Sent. It's been sent out, uh, by way of an email. From Pam. It's an email for the executive session.
Just now.
Mayor?
Yes, uh, Bob?
I just wanted, I just wanted, uh, all the people that are participating in, uh, in the meeting, uh, that the meeting will stay open while we are in executive session. We'll go in and, uh, determination first. Then we'll come back in and explain whether we're going in and if we are, you know, what those topics will be. Then we'll go back into executive session and then we'll come back when we're finished. He stated whether or not any act was taken.
Okay, so, uh, to the general public, um, the meeting that you're in at the moment is still open and it will remain open while we go into this closed determination. The city attorney will come back out and let you know if the items qualify for executive session. The meeting will still be in progress. It will still be open. You will not hear anything, uh, anyone talking while we're in executive session. And once we come out of execu- executive session, we will return back to the open session that you're in, correct, Bob?
Correct, and on that note, I would, I would, I'll, 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 um, mute there. Um, on the, on the general meeting.
Okay, that is, they need to mute their phones in the general meeting until we come back, correct, Bob?
Right.
Okay, uh, members, you should have received a text from Pam on the, uh, information for the closed determination. So at this time, uh, I will entertain a motion that we proceed into a closed determination.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Smith and seconded by, I didn't catch who that was.
Davis?
Alderman Irving.
Alderman Davis. Um, unreadiness, how do you vote Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Frazier? Alderman Frazier, how do you vote? How do you vote, uh, Alderman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Diller? Alderman Diller? Well, we didn't hear from him, but we have a majority, so we will proceed into the closed determination. So go ahead on and log in to the next one, members.
How did he do that?
This is Dan Denver. Uh, I think he's already signed off, uh, Dan. But for the Aldermen, you need to, uh, leave this meeting and go to the other meeting and log in on there. It was sent by text and it was sent by email.
We don't have, I don't, I don't have that. I just got the last one that-
It was just-
Let me pull it out of here.
Yeah, it was just sent by, uh, email from Pam.
Today?
No, just now, uh, just about three minutes ago.
That's what I'm saying, I haven't gotten it yet. Cause it said, I got to six o'clock. It said six to eight, that's the one I called in on.
Yeah, that's the, that's the, the one we're on now. They should have, uh, if you, it's on your text messages, if you look on your phone, you should have, uh, information there. Um, I'll send the email again.
Yeah, it didn't come, it didn't come. The last one I have is, it says Dan, Sarah Carter, it says one image. Damn, okay, I think I see something. Is that this one that says, please join my meeting from your computer or something and?
It should say-
You dial it and you access it, right?
Yeah, mhm.
Okay, all right, I think I got it.
Okay, so you can leave this meeting.
I can't, okay, thank you.
Okay.
I don't have it.
Uh, is that, um, Irving, serving?
Yes. I don't have it.
Sevilla, you don't have it?
No, no.
All right, one moment.
Dustin, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Sarah? Okay.
Hey, I'm here.
I know, but you're, you're still in the regular meeting.
Yeah, you gotta leave this, leave this meeting and go to the other one, um.
Dustin?
Yes.
This is Alderman Irving, I don't have the asset code nor the number to call in for the other meeting.
Yes, I'm sending that over right now.
Okay.
I'm sending that over to you guys now. I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, come, I'm gonna kick you guys off of this meeting and, uh, you should get the new information, okay?
Okay. Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, for everybody else on the call, we have gone, Aldermen have gone into executive session, it's closed. We will, they shouldn't be coming back once they are finished. I'll, uh, we'll be back within-
and the topics that are gonna be discussed, uh, are litigation and, uh, the potential lease of property, uh, which is located under the hill. So as soon as, uh, as soon as we finish the executive session meeting, we'll be back in the general meeting to let you know if we, if any acts will be taken based on those two topics. So as soon as, as soon as we finish the executive session meeting, we'll be back in the general meeting to let you know if we, if any action will be taken based on those two topics.
Okay, everyone, for those asking about the resolutions being sent out, we cannot send them out and since both had modifications.
Sevia, I got you there.
Are y'all back?
So far we got Sevia.
Okay, this is Darryl Grunell and I'm back.
Okay. All right, who was the other alderman that just came in? I'm sorry.
Sarah Carter-Smith just came on.
I got, I got Sarah. I've got Sarah and Mayor. Sevia, you're there, right?
Yes, I'm here, I'm here for this.
Okay, there you are, okay. Okay, there's Davis. Okay. We got Sevia, Mayor, Alderman Davis. Who just logged in?
Felicia. Aldi- Irving.
Got you. You can go ahead and mute your phone there, Alderwoman Irving, please, thank you.
Joyce Arsenal Mathis returning. Hello?
Thank you, Alderwoman Mathis.
Hello.
Yeah, we've got you, okay.
Thank you.
This is Dan Dillard.
Alderman Dillard, noted. So we're waiting on Alderman Frazier.
Hello?
Is it Alderman Frazier is back?
Here.
Okay, go ahead on mute your phone, Alderman Frazier. Do we have the city attorney back?
I'm here.
Okay, Bob is back. So, Madam Clerk, will you perform the roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Aldi Mathis?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Ald woman Irving?
Here.
Alderman Frazier?
Here.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
And Alderman Dillard?
Here.
I'll present the bear.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have returned back to open session. So at this time, I will turn it over to the city attorney.
Okay, I'll need a motion from the board that will authorize me to enter into negotiations with the Vikings Cruise Lines with respect to locating a docking facility south of the Perry Street Landing and, I know, a budding little Mexico property, based on the parameters.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, do I need to recuse myself in the vote because I'm not sure what y'all are talking about?
Right, you just, you just recuse yourself when I call for the vote, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, so it's been moved by Alderwoman Mathis and seconded by Alderman Davis. Unreadiness? Oh, was it Dan or was it Davis?
Dan.
Oh, Dave.
Okay, Davis, Alderman Davis. All right, unreadiness on the motion. If there be none, how do you vote, Alderwoman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Smith?
Recused.
Okay, recusal. How do you vote, Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, it passes by a majority, five voted aye and one recused themselves from the voting process. Okay, attorney lay them.
Okay, we'll need another motion by the board to authorize me to enter into negotiation with American Queen with respect to the docking rights located at the Perry Street Landing, based on the parameters.
Okay, there's a motion by Alderwoman Mathis, is there a second?
Second.
Is that Alderman Frazier?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, seconded by Alderman Frazier. Readiness on the motion. If not, how do you vote, Alderwoman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Smith?
Accused.
Okay, how do you vote, Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
Okay, how do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, it passes five in favor with one recused themselves from participating in the voting process. And that's all we have, correct, City Attorney?
That's correct.
Okay, so at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn and let me preface it that the proceedings of this open meeting were recorded so you can always go back. It will be posted on the city's website, the recording of the entire meeting for those who are interested in going back to listen to the meeting. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
It's been moved by Alderman Davis, seconded by who?
Alderwoman Irving.
Alderwoman Irving. It is not a debatable motion, therefore I call for the vote. How do you vote, Alderwoman Mathis?
Aye and good night.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier? How do you vote, Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, we adjourn. Please, please, please be safe out there with this pandemic. God bless you all, good night.
Good night.
Good night.